What's up, Midlothian? Hey, I'm just gonna tell you right now, it's Roba Flure. We're here, as always, locally loved, nationally known, Lobo. What's up, buddy? I know we're here in the Opoca Palace, as always, but let's just get straight to the point. You can see on the TV right now what we're watching. We've gone quite some time, and we have not mentioned anything about this school board debacle that's been going on, and we've been delaying recording this broadcast, and Lobo said hit record, so here we go. We're watching this. We've got, we've got a couple of, uh, there's different sides.
Yeah, we had some really good topics from both sides. I mean, they both made their cases. They've been very civil. This hasn't been, this hasn't been a blowout fest like everyone's been saying that it's gonna happen.
But I think they're, I think they're off topic. They're not talking about what the situation at hand is.
No one is talking about what they're trying to do. What they're trying to do is this lady made comments that people think are racist, and it's up to you to decide whether you think this is racist or not. But to me, I don't, we already heard, they want you to see color. I don't see color. My brother's black. My, my family looks like the United Nations.
Right.
You've been in my house, you've been in my parties, you guys, well, you've been in my parties.
Absolutely, yeah.
Dude, you have no idea who's gonna show up at my house. We're cool with everybody. That's what I do. I'm cool with everybody.
Well, you don't know this about me, but I've got an uncle who's gay. I've got a cousin-in-law who is, who is black. I've got a best friend who's gay. So, I mean...
Well, he's not gay, he just likes the way it feels, but...
You know, it comes like this, you know, I see...
The thing is this, is what we've got going on right now, and you've, you've got two sides, and of course, you've got the extreme left and the extreme right, and you can discount these people as much as you want to, which I would, because if you literally talk about this and think about this, and this is your life, you have a problem. I don't care what side you're on, because most of the world does not get focused up on this.
You're never gonna win this argument with, with anybody, because there are so many different sides. This is like what's going over in the Middle East.
Well, it's a no-win.
It's a no-win, yes. No one's gonna win on this.
Dead serious, if you choose a side in this, you're an asshole.
The man that just left on...
Doesn't matter which side it is.
The man that just left on screen right now is from Fort Worth, Texas. He has nothing to do with Midlothian.
We've seen four or five who have nothing to do with Midlothian. Now, they're here for a cause. But the guy before him literally said he had no idea what we're here to talk about, but he wants to talk.
Right.
That's weird to me.
He's a hype man.
No, if you're not a member of our school district, why are you here? Why are you here?
Absolutely. Lobo, you said something...
I feel the same way when people say, "Well, my grandkids go to school," they're, "Well, you know what? You're not the parent. How about the parent come out and talk instead of the grandparents?" You know, this is something that affects their kid. Now, it's your grandkid, you're right, but the... What I've got an issue with this, with the whole CRT...
Yeah, explain that, cuz you did really good earlier.
Or whatever. Look, this school, the school board, or any school anywhere in the country, in my opinion, is to teach our kid how to read, how to write, how to do mathematics, maybe know a little bit of science, know some history, know some other things. Well, of course, they go, "Well, now, history is different." Well, history is always different.
Yeah, it is.
Exactly.
There's always two sides to every story.
But this CRT subject is not gonna put a guy on the moon. It's not gonna give him advantage to the guy who wants to be that next superconductor guy.
What they're saying is, is our, our kids, because they're a minority, is not being taught the same way as the other kids, and it's not fair. Well, look, my kid is a Hispanic kid, because I'm Hispanic, my wife is Hispanic. He's being taught just the same shit as Bo was being taught in school. They're not saying, "Well, Anthony, you can't learn this because you're Hispanic."
Right.
This is a, an ignorant conversation from that side about you're being treated badly, and you're being, uh, held back because you're a color of whatever color it may be. What you wanna do is you want to come in here and you want to tell the kids how to feel and how to think and different things like that. That's not your job. That's my job. I'm the parent.
Right.
If I raise an asshole kid, it's because I'm an asshole, and it's on me.
Right. You said it, absolutely.
But if you raise my asshole, and I'm not an asshole, then guess who's the asshole?
Right.
You are.
Exactly.
And the school board will not stand up. Look, the deal with this lady, she, she made some posts, as I said, that people may have thought were racist.
That's the root issue. That's what people are getting away from.
But here's the thing. Maybe they were, maybe they weren't. I don't speak both sides. I speak one side, and I read one language, and I don't take sides in anything. I stay in the middle. I'm Switzerland, baby. I float back and forth with what feels good to me. I don't do right, I don't do left. But the fact of the matter is, is when she was hired, they ignored their own requirements of what was required for this job. Must have a master's degree in education. She doesn't have that. She has a law degree. A law degree, believe it or not, does not ma- uh, match a master's.
Doesn't matter what college she went to, because there was a big issue about she went to a not-so-good college.
Well, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, if it's an accredited college, it's an accredited college.
I mean, you still have to pass the bar.
Well, yeah. Well, and I don't know that she ever did. I mean, she's not an attorney, that's why. I mean, you know, but again, my buddy has taken the bar three times, can't pass it. But he still has a law degree. But at the end of the day, that master's is still better than the law degree, and a PhD obviously beats that, too.
Right.
Now, the problem with a PhD, of course, is that you're a person with no real-life experience, and everything you deal with is theoretical.
Is this symphony up online right now?
Yeah.
Y'all wanna hear from her?
Well, I mean, I, what are we gonna hear? The same, the same thing. You know, she lost the election because people didn't want her points of view, and now she's gonna give them anyway. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, is regardless of, of what's going on here, what you have is you have at the very root cause, they hired a bad per- not a bad person, I didn't say that. It was a bad hire. It's a bad hire because they went against what they said was the requirement to hire a person. There were other candidates out there that could have been better. But then she came in, and she did some things that people didn't like, and people went to the school board, and they said, "Hey, I don't know about this." We did. We talked, we talked to one of the school board members. "Oh, well, you know, she's under a, a contract. We're not gonna renew the contract."
That's what, that's what we were told.
And now we hear, "Well, she's a city employee. There's nothing we can do about it." Well, there's always something you can do about it. It was a bad hire to begin with, and then obviously questionable. And look, let me tell you something. In my job, if I put something on social media, I'm fried by social media.
Right.
Most people are. Why is that not happening here if that's the case?
Right.
The, the thing is, is you've got a bunch of people coming on, they're talking about things that have nothing to do with what they're here to talk about, which is this one particular person who technically should not have been there in the first place.
No. And can I add something here? And this is my opinion. This started, they jumped the gun on this position. So therefore, I don't think that they, they properly built the criteria for the position. They didn't properly vet...
Well, I, I think they built the criteria properly.
They did this because, right before this happened, right before they hired a director of, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion, there was a huge thing with Ms. Toby, and we've all seen it.
Right.
Where she dressed as Serena Williams as Halloween. That caught a lot of backlash, so they bring this lady in.
Well, hang on. By the way, with the Ms. Toby thing, I don't know Ms. Toby, and I don't condone any kind of racism whatsoever, obviously, but blackface generally is used to demean a person. Her intention of this, from what my understanding is, is that Serena, she's a tennis player.
She plays tennis.
And Serena is her favorite tennis player, and so she dressed up, not to do a black thing or a white thing, but this is my favorite person, just like if you dress up with Iron Man. Now, that being said, in today's social climate, we can't do those things.
Yeah.
And it was a mistake. It was a bad mistake. I don't think there was malice in it, but nevertheless, you're gonna get tarred with that brush. But they also wanted to fire her. Everybody was wanting to fire this woman. Oh, my gosh, she's a racist.
They called for her resignation.
Okay, we gotta let John talk now.
So, John, they called for Tammy Toby's resignation for not too different than...
You still can't talk.
The director of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Collusion?
Coll- collusion.
You know, I get everything that happened with Tammy, and I'm not supporting what she did, cuz I don't think it was right in today's climate, obviously.
Right.
But she was honoring her favorite person. I mean, she worshipped Serena.
That's the same thing I said.
Yeah, I know, but I'm reiterating what you said. I, I don't get what the problem was, the fact that she loves this lady, and she dressed up like her. I mean, it's ignorant crap.
She did have a homage to her. I mean...
Yes. So why in the hell is everybody getting on her shit? Because she honored someone who she loves so much. You know what? All you guys that have a problem with that, and I've been pretty, pretty back, you know, I kinda keep my mouth shut, but fuck you. But I said it. Because you guys are a bunch of ignorant motherfuckers. You got me on my soapbox, but here it is. This woman loves Serena Williams. She dressed up like her. I don't see a fucking problem with it.
No.
Can John have a shot, please?
And let me tell you something. I once dressed up as Michael Jackson. Now, the only difference between myself and Ms. Toby is I went as Michael Jackson, like, early 2000s, and not 1980. So...
So you were, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
But that didn't make you racist. That didn't make you racist because you painted your face black and you put a fucking glove on. It just means...
I love Michael Jackson.
It just means that you're homosexual, like we all doubted to begin with.
I would love to...
He loves the way it feels. He loves the way it feels.
My lifelong goal was me and Macaulay Culkin on a Ferris wheel together at Neverland Ranch.
Yeah, singing Kumbaya.
For Jackson, yes.
I really doesn't, don't have too many, you know...
You know, I, I kept on...
But the thing is, is I don't understand these people coming from out of town to talk about the agenda, not about the, the topic at hand. And I understand the agenda. I understand it's important to them. I'm not saying, I'm not discounting their agenda, because look, I, I disagree with the organization of Black Lives Matter, but to me, obviously, black lives do matter. Okay?
Absolutely.
But there's a difference. I don't believe in equity. I believe in equality. I think we all have the same opportunities. That would be like me saying, "I grew up in a trailer house in Albuquerque, New Mexico, so broke I ate beans every day," which I did, and saying, "I was, I was mistreated and everything else. I deserve a Ferrari and a mansion." It doesn't make sense. There's no such thing as equity. There's equality. I became me from where I was off my hard work, and of course, privilege, I don't remember where that came from, but apparently I had privilege, which I also see their side on that, too. I mean, you do get a different look if you're a person of a color. But I'm gonna go ahead and do that. But I got privileged, and I worked my fucking ass off, and now I have a mansion in Midlothian.
You know, growing up, one of my favorite shows in the world was fucking Sanford and Son. I love Red Fox. Red Fox was the funniest guy I've ever met, or not ever met, but ever watched on TV. He was hilarious. I watched The Jeffersons. I loved The Jeffersons. It was a great show.
Yeah.
I had no problem with it. I didn't see a problem with the color of their skin. They were genuinely entertaining people to watch. And, you know, I have, I grew up watching all this stuff and, and interacting with these people, and I don't, you know, I just don't get...
Of these people?
Well, okay, people of color, people of...
I know, people who are...
It doesn't matter.
People who are different. But we're all still people at the end of the day.
But we're still people all pink inside.
You know, that's the whole point. That's what I was about to get to that.
We breathe the same air, we bleed the same blood.
Don't you remember the little Bible song we used to sing in church? "Jesus loves the little children."
Yeah.
Red and yellow, black and white, they're all special in his sight.
Yeah.
The fuck happened to that? These people are shitbags on both sides, and they're making a, they're making a fight where there's not a fight.
I can tell you what it is. Follow the money, because this is all about money.
Well, I told my brother during the George Floyd thing, which was a tragic thing, and look, it wasn't a racist thing. It was a cop thing. It's a shitty cop thing. Okay? And it's unfortunate that he was black. But you know what? It happens so often. And you know me, I always ask every cop that I meet, "How many unarmed black people did you shoot today?" It's a thing I do. Okay? I told my brother straight up, I said, "If that was you, we'd have died together that day, on the spot." And as anybody, it could be any of these people that I don't know up here, talking for whatever reason they're talking about, I won't watch that happen. I will not watch that happen. It'll be me, and the black dude on the ground, and the cop, and we're all going together.
Yep, and I have several black...
Because we are all people.
Or the white dude, or the Hispanic guy, or the Korean guy.
Don't give a shit what color you are. Somebody said a blue person earlier. I'd like to know who the blue people are, cuz I have not seen...
Or the green one. I have never met a green guy.
Well, no, that, no, she said whether you were blue or whatever, and I don't know if that means cop...
Blue, black, purple, or green.
Well, I mean, but, you know, the thing to me is, I, I haven't seen any blue people. Smurfs, Smurfs are blue.
No, the only purple guys I've met are the guys that have just low blood oxygen, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, like, when you choke them out, they turn purple. It's really cool.
I mean, sometimes when I get on a real...
I try to do it a lot.
Good tangent, I turn purple, but...
To come back what you were saying, I have several black friends who I love to death. They're brothers of mine, and I would go with them to battle anytime. They needed me at midnight, I'm there with them.
But you know what? And, but, but you, you say that, and I say that...
Same with both y'all.
And I say that, but every time I say, you know, "I grew up with so-and-so, so-and-so, so-and-so..."
Oh, that's your token black friend.
Yeah. Well, when we talk about equality, a white guy's always gotta say, "Well, I, I'm friends with this guy, and this guy, and this guy," you know? I mean, I don't know.
Well, you don't have to say it, but we say it as, as a case in point.
Man, we just showed up at the...
And then we wind up being a racist for saying it.
You know, when I was a kid, we just showed up at the, at the, we call it the Bolts, where we rode bikes in Mantlebrook, and, and, well, you know, the neighborhood over by Armstrong and, and all that. We had, it was a field, and we built jumps, and we all showed up with our bikes. Didn't matter what color you were. We just showed up. I mean...
Well, and that's the whole thing, is, you know, I, I struggle a lot in life general, because I believe that I was the last of the last great generations, because we were technically, as Gen Xers, we were the, the first lock-in childs, or what do you call them, latchkey kids.
Latchkey kids, yeah.
Well, we didn't sit at home. We went out and rode our bikes, and we did this, and we did that. We were mainly meant to fend for ourselves.
Yeah, we'd leave in the morning, mom and dad would say, "Be home, we're at dinnertime."
And, you know, as we got into millennials, you know, they got the computers. You gotta remember, Johnny, you and me, like, we were around before microwaves, before VCR, before cable TV.
I remember my dad financed his first VCR.
Well, you guys are a little older than me, not too much, but, um, my first computer at six years old was an Apple IIe.
Mine was a Commodore 64.
Well, that was one of the first computers.
It was actually, what was the other one? It was Commodore 64, but then there was the other one that wasn't real good.
The Atari, I think.
No, the Intellivision.
No.
No, the Intelliv- that was a game. Get back down there, millennial.
But I was never a nerd, anyway. I, I was out doing my thing, you know? So I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, Gen X though, by the way, 1979, and I just wanna...
Just fucking barely.
You're just right on the cusp of the edge.
But, but the thing is, is...
My mom whooped my ass.
We didn't have these, we didn't have these problems back then. Now, of course, the one side will say, "Well, no, it's always been there. It's ingrained in our, our culture, and this and that, and the other thing." I personally don't believe that. I never, I never thought of a person as anything but a person. And I'll tell people to this day, if you look me in the eyes, you see anything other than a man, then you're a fucking racist.
Yeah.
I don't give a shit what fucking color you are. Cuz when I look at a person, I look at a person. If you are a shitbag, you're a shitbag. If you're a good person, you're a good person. I don't give a shit. You could be a blue guy, which I've never seen.
But maybe there is one.
You may be a shitty blue guy. I don't know. But what I've got with this is going on, and by the way, has anybody noticed? I, I think...
Andrea has left the building.
Eduardo.
I think Eduardo did an entire coloring book on that. If you watched this, I think he was doing a coloring book. He looked down most of the time.
There she is.
I know he painted...
Look at Andrea, so patriotic.
She's wearing the flag tonight.
Well, hang on a minute. She was the one last year that said we had a white privilege problem here.
She did.
And I'm gonna call her out on that. She said it, and that's what started this whole deal.
She went after Tammy Toby.
Yes, because she had an agenda that's political, by the way, and all of a sudden, boom, we have a white privilege problem, and here we are.
Hey, what, by the way, where is Tammy? I do not see Tammy up there tonight.
Well, we know, we know Richard's still in the hospital.
And we wanna take a message, we wanna take a minute, and we all have our praying-for-Penya shirts on, even Lobo. He's wearing sleeves tonight, and that is a major thing. That is an honor.
I'm about to die of heat as...
Richard, we're still praying for your brother. We want you to pull through.
He's, he's getting better.
Yeah, I know. We watch all his wife's updates, and it's a good though.
If I don't get a hug from him within the next month, I'm gonna be pissed for...
And we're gonna do a shot right now. We're gonna do a shot.
Perfect time for a Richard Penya shot.
Richard?
To Richard Penya.
We're praying for you, buddy.
I know we're a little unorthodox.
Get well, bro.
Get well.
We, we're praying, we're in...
Can we drink now?
Yeah. We're the way we are, and, you know, sometimes we take shots for people.
We should drink, and then to hell with Rob.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
If we wait for Rob to stop talking, we're gonna be 90.
Man, I tell you what...
Or me, maybe. I don't know. I talk a lot now, too.
So anyways, we, we crank this podcast on because we were kinda feeling the emotions. But moving forward, uh, I gotta know one thing. Who loses a horse?
No, it's not about the losing the horse. It's not about the losing the horse. No.
What can you describe the horse?
I'm not giving a free horse. I grew up, I grew up on a ranch, farmed, whatever you wanna call it, and we never lost our horses. So whoever you are, you're really a horrible horse owner. But I also do understand, because sometimes the gate gets left open. We have these things called children, and sometimes they mess up, or sometimes we're too drunk to shut the gate. I might have allegedly, hashtag allegedly, done that. But it wasn't about that. It was about the woman who found the horse. And what did you describe the horse? Now, keep in mind, she has horses, so she knows the way to describe a horse.
Yes.
Cuz no one's getting a free horse out of this.
No one's getting a free horse, yeah.
Do you think the guy, like, what, what is it?
The guy on Montgomery Lane wants a free horse, whatever.
I'm thinking one of the guys in the neighborhood, like, "I'm just gonna get me a free horse for the kid."
Yeah, Massey Meadows, Massey Meadows guy.
We got a birthday party coming. "Go get me this free horse. I'll pick him up in my Honda Civic."
Hey, that's my...
Take him on home.
That's my horse. Uh, it's about six foot seven, answers to the name of Pearl.
One of the best ones.
He's got a white face, and he's got a one crooked tail.
What was I saying today? He's got a long face and a long tail, and I ride him like your mom.
And he poops when he walks, right?
Yeah, he shits when he walks. That one made me giggle a whole lot.
Oh, my goodness.
Wait, I got another one. Hang on. What was mine that I had? Oh, the one today, that was, um, about some people speeding up and down the road, cuz, you know, we got kids there.
Street racers?
Drag racing.
Drag racing on 14th Street. 14th Street South.
Yeah.
And of course, you know, I really, I couldn't help it. I, I had to say, you know, we really need a drag strip here.
With a Chipotle.
With a Chipotle attached to it. And the best part was, no one got that. Was a joke. People literally started asking, like, "Well, that's really what we need. We need a drag strip." That is the last thing we need here.
And we need a Chipotle, because it has come up several times.
Well, Chipotle is apparently the most important shit ever. But what was the one I sent you guys?
Gag.
Oh, this one. Oh, my God.
Did you have to re...
"A friend looking for an Aussie doodle puppy. Can anyone point me in the right direction?" There are a lot of people that breed animals in this area.
French Bulldogs, cement city Frenchies.
Yes, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna venture to say that no one does Aussie doodle puppies.
I know somebody that actually does them.
In town.
Of course you do.
No.
No, I say, "In town."
Not in town, not in town. But I, I know who breeds Aussie doodles in, uh, Rendon, which, or Lillian, which is right outside of Mansfield.
Why does that not surprise me?
Yeah.
Rob knows everybody. If he doesn't, he'll make one up.
So I, I wanna tell you what caught my eye. Now, maybe this is just me and the lunatic that I am. "Hello, everyone. I'm thinking about starting a mental health group around the area. A group where we can check in on each other, do events like bowling, eat out, and go on walks." Well, I need to know where I can fill out my application, cuz I have a lot of mental health issues. Anyways...
No, I, I gotta...
I'm probably making fun of somebody.
Those three were my favorite three. No, they were my favorite three. And I hit you with the Aussie doodle one early, cuz that one just really got me.
What did you just send on text? Because obviously, I can't interrupt with the airstream here.
Well, you gotta see it to see it.
Oh, no, it's, it's, my phone's hooked up, so you're...
No, that's my phone hooked up, not yours.
I sent this.
But, uh... Chicken case Adidas.
I don't get that.
It says, "Anyone got good chicken case, C-A-S-E, Adidas, like the shoe."
Oh, case Adidas.
Chicken case Adidas, case Adidas?
Just in case you need some case Adidas.
I was gonna talk to, uh, to Raquel Daniels on that, because she probably has the best chicken case.
My wife makes nothing...
You know how to make chicken case Adidas?
My wife makes nothing that tastes like a shoe. I can promise you that.
Army worms are a big thing right now.
You know what? I had my exterminator out, uh, last Friday, last Friday, uh...
Okay, I'm ignorant to this. What is an army worm?
Okay, so...
They eat your grass.
They tear, they will, I mean, they will...
It's like a weevil or something?
They are, yeah.
Well, they will destroy your yard in a matter, matter of weeks. So when I lived in Rosebud, I lived on the corner house, and my backyard just turned into nothing but sludge. It, it was ridiculous. I had to call, who'd I, I used to, I'd be a free plug, uh...
No free plugs.
No free plugs.
No, I'm fixing to give one, though.
From now on, if we're plugging people, they're paying.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not giving any more free plugs.
So, you pest control companies out there...
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Opoca's got a buddy.
I, I got, I've got a buddy, and he gave me half price, because I've been using him since he started. Joey the Pied Piper.
You know, he was already mentioned on there. A lot of people had already mentioned him.
Joey the Pied Piper, I called him, literally. I called him at 1:00 on Friday afternoon. I said, "Joey, my wife just killed four army worms on our back porch. We've spent three years trying to get Bermuda grass to grow in our backyard for our dogs. We finally have it, and she panicked." He said, "I'll be right there." He had a completely full schedule, and he hit us on his way out. Joey the Pied Piper, that is the guy, and I will plug him every day. If you guys want five bucks because I plugged him, then there we go.
Joey, you have an invoice coming to your mail.
I want $5,000.
Okay, well, you got it.
No, call Joey the Pied Piper, uh...
He took care of us. But anyway, army worms have invited, have invaded Midlothian, and it is a big problem. They will kill your grass.
Well, you see what happens when you start CRT.
But I'm not making fu- hey. I'm not making fun of this army worm situation, because it, Lobo, and the, "Come on, I wanna lay, come on, I, come, come on, I wanna lay ya."
Resort.
You just made that sound dirty.
Come on, I wanna lay ya in a resort.
We've all been there. You actually have some very beautiful grass.
We do not want army worms to invade you.
I actually want fake grass so I can get rid of the yard.
If army worms hit your grass, you will...
You'll cry.
You will shit your pants, and you will, I mean, you think Lobo has a temper sometimes on this podcast? If, I, I know you and your grass. It, it will destroy you.
I will just burn the place to the ground.
In case you guys don't know, Lobo has the best yard in Midlothian. I mean, this is a spectacular setup.
Of course, you can't see it.
But it is amazing.
Unless you're invited.
No, I hide.
It is absolutely amazing, and army worms would kill you.
You know what? Hey, if we ever, I know that was like a once-in-a-hundred-year winter storm that we just had, but, uh, it was funny, because we were all cooped up in the house. We had no electricity. You had no electricity, but you didn't leave home. You, you stayed home and just dealt with it.
We gutted it out. We're hardcore like that.
You guys hardcoreed it out. Uh, of course, my wife and, and my kids left, uh, to go seek heat You guys hardcoreed it out. Uh, of course, my wife and, and my kids left uh, to go seek heat at a friend's house. But, so we're off work. We can't go anywhere. We have nothing to do. Uh, and then I got a thought to myself. My son says, hey, can we go over to Lobo's house and ski or snowboard down his driveway?
Dude, that's like a dangerous event there.
No, I'm telling you-
Nothing but trees and hills.
Yeah, but you get rid of a kid that way.
We spent, so Lobo, Lobo says, hey, gate's open. I mean, go, go over there and snowboard. So I took my son over to his house and literally snowboarded down uh-
His driveway.
Yeah. Well, you've been down the driveway, so can you imagine, you know, literally sn-
I've gotta put my car in four wheel drive to get up his driveway. It is that steep.
We didn't have, we didn't have a, a legit snowboard. So what we did was we just took the-
Once you come, you're never leaving.
We, we just, we took the trucks off of a-
Especially after you eat your wife's food.
We took the trucks off a longboard.
That's why I have to put it in four wheel drive. You're too heavy to get up.
I'm sorry, Rob. Go ahead.
And, and, but the crazy thing is you were actually able to get out of there every day because we, we met up every day to stay warm at Brandon Burger. Yeah, cause-
Another plug, Lonnie, you owe us five thousand dollars.
Brandon Burger, your place for warmth, beer, and burgers.
And five thousand dollars to our podcast.
Yes.
Um-
We've made ten grand tonight. That is amazing.
We know it was smart and I didn't buy a Ford.
Dude, come on.
So my Dodge just like made it up to like it was nothing.
Whatever. Do you have the fake toe mirrors over looking? You look like Marty the Moose.
I always do.
Marty Moose, Marty Moose.
Well, that was kinda weird.
That was weird.
That was really weird.
Okay, John O'Poca has a gag reflex.
The reason that I have those mirrors out like that is that's the only way I can use the concave mirrors, which keeps me from running into things. Cause I run into things all the time anyway.
And you lift them up?
And you put them down.
Yes.
That's funny.
Well, you gotta remember when I moved in there, I backed into a tree with the mirrors out, cause I didn't know the tree was there. The tree's been there hundreds of years. I've been there like a month and I backed into a tree.
And you backed into it with your toe mirrors up?
But it's good. I've got like eighteen thousand other trees.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull a HUD real quick. Ready? Everybody look.
Oh.
Oh, that's the, that's the HUD hearts and-
That's the HUD hearts and shake right there.
That's pretty much every time I say something around HUD hearts and is that.
When are we gonna have HUD on the show?
Well, I mean, we need to have this. This needs to happen. Do you guys, in the comments-
We're moving Tuesday for our recording, so that's the perfect time to get him because that's his payoff.
Yeah, we'll do it when we're out of town.
You gotta remember HUD has a, a really crappy job that he never complains about, by the way. This is a choice of HUD to go out and work in Old Cliff every day. He's not a traffic cop. He does real stuff. And he's good to the community. The community's good to him. He did a thing, I don't know if you saw that or not, but he was at a, a bike giveaway or something like that this week. That, I mean, people respect HUD. I mean, he's a good dude. He's not just a good dude to us here in Midlothian where he's from. He's a good dude to the city. And this is a dude who gets up and does a thankless job that, you know, of course, you know me and, and police, I gotta give him crap all the time. He takes it. He's, he's a good cop.
Yeah, he is.
We had a crap cop on here. We had a great, great superhero cop. But you know, not all superheroes wear Captain America. HUD is a good cop too.
And he's a damn good councilman.
Yes, but the thing is, is he, because of his schedule, he can't do a lot of things.
Right.
And like tonight, he's at work.
Yeah.
And you know, while we're praying for pain, pray for HUD. Let's pray for HUD come home tonight.
Absolutely.
Cause these good, these days, being a cop is not a good thing.
You know, I met another councilman the other day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and, and I know he reached out to you too. He reached out to all of us, uh, Clark Whitcliff. And he, after you pointed, you pointed at the camera, uh, he wants, he messaged me and said he wants to come on the show actually and uh, he, he, and, and get to know him.
All, that's fine. I'm good with all that, but I still, I still hold the same thing. If he doesn't accuse himself.
And I think that's what, that's what he'll discuss.
What is gonna come with the excuse why?
Did you know that though, did you know that his grandf- his great grandfather owned uh, the Webb family buildings, which is the whole side that uh, that Kim and Jenny's is on?
Well, I think his mom still owns.
They own it all. They own it all. Actually-
Cause Leanne Clark owns the pawn shop area.
Yeah. But you know, his mom, his mom is actually the lady-
I mean, you know, that was a bank, the Bonnie and Claude.
Correct.
Uh, Bonnie and Claude.
Did you know, did you know-
I think his name was Clyde.
Clark's mom is the one who does all the school locations. So if there's a new school that's gonna come in, his mom is the one that proposes a location and then tells the city exactly why they need to have that location.
So he's-
Their land, that makes sense.
So, so this guy-
Well, it's not their land, no, no.
He's, I found out he's twenty-five years old.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five years old. Um, he graduated from high school here in Midlothian. And at the time, Bill Houston was the mayor. He went to Bill Houston and he said, hey, listen, you put me on the P and Z board or I'm running for city council. Uh, so Bill Houston put him on the, the P and Z board. Of course, shortly after he ran for city council because he's already, next year will be his third year. He's twenty-five. That'll be three years, twenty-six, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, he became a, a city councilman. I wonder if that's the youngest councilman of all time.
When I first moved here and I was wondering like, what the hell's going on with this city council? Like where is there city planning? Where's this, this, that, the other thing? Because the growth is, is very odd growth for a city. And a lot of people here don't realize that. This isn't how a city grows. And I wanted to ask some questions. He was the first person to say, look, I'll meet you for lunch. Let's go talk about it. Let's find out. And I, and I didn't.
I really think we should though, because-
Well, I mean, I, I almost-
The kid is smart.
Well, but again, I don't know, I don't wanna talk to him here as much as I wanna talk to him there and find out where he's coming from before he comes on here.
Right.
Because, you know, I do know for a fact, and that's the reason he reached out, he's one of the ones I'm talking about.
Well, let, let's set up a lunch with him. Clark, if you're listening, we'd like to set up a lunch with you sometime.
And I know, and I know you're listening, cause you listen to all of our podcasts. Thank you guys for supporting.
I'd like to hear ahead of time because if he has valid points to come on and say, well, you know, maybe you're misunderstood or this or that, I'll be happy to clean that up.
Hey, you know what?
But if not, come on the podcast, well, you're gonna get what you get. So-
I have a little con- nugget of conology here.
A nugget of conology?
A nugget of conology. And this is gonna blow Brett's head.
Can you tell us?
Did you know, I think back in nineteen thirty-two, back in nineteen thirty-two, Midlothian had a movie theater, theater.
Yeah, we did.
Do you know what the name of it was?
No.
Midloth Theater.
Yeah, that's, that's what, yeah, Midloth Theater.
So there you go, Brett Kemp.
Did you know that Doug?
Well, of course Doug did. His mom wrote two books on the city.
So, so Karen's not here tonight and I know you guys see, uh, this is Doug Eschberger.
He is our sexy bartender.
Our sexy bartender that's behind us tonight. He's the son of Karen Eschberger and she has written three books, historical books pertaining to-
I need another beer, Bob, Doug.
Three, Doug? Three books pertaining to Midlothian.
I haven't even read three books. And she wrote three? See Spot Run is where I stopped.
So Doug's, uh, Doug's promised us that he's gonna get us a copy of those three different books. He's gonna get us a copy of those three different books so we can look at them.
Would they have pictures?
Yeah, they have, no, they have pictures.
Did you know, did you know Clark is the holder of the whole history of Midlothian?
Yeah.
I mean, he has Midlothian back to when Midlothian, before Midlothian was Midlothian. Did you know Midlothian had more millionaires and billionaires than any-
Fifty or so?
Any other city in the whole state of Texas?
In nineteen-
This was the millionaire capital.
I forget what he said, nineteen fifty, nineteen forty.
Back to that if we don't uh, screw it up.
Yeah, and that's the thing. And, and you know, and I told, I told Clark-
This should be the Highland Park of the South.
And that's what I said. I, I, I think we all agree. You've said it numerous times. We are at a pivot. Or rather, a fork in the road with our city. We are either gonna A, become Highland Park, South Lake, you know, something, something grand, okay?
Right.
Or we're gonna become DeSoto Lancaster Duncan Hill Cedar Hill.
We could literally talk to him for hours on the history of Midlothian and where it came from and still be, and still be wanting more.
Well, I mean, my thing is I, I wanna talk to him first. I wanna find out where he stands on the vote.
I agree.
Again, if he does not accuse himself, he can tell me all he wants, but it is what it is.
Well, I don't-
I agree with that and I, and I believe there should be a private conversation, but I also, you, you put it out, you put it out, Lobo, on this podcast. And I think it would be good to-
I think, I wanna know his side of the story before I do it, because if I find out his side of the story here on the podcast, I may or may not handle that right.
Well, he's not afraid, apparently.
He'll be afraid.
I'll tell you what.
He's wrong. I'll tell him. I'm telling you right now.
Clark Whitcliff has got some balls. That boy will stand up to anything and he will answer any question you've got.
Well, we're gonna find out.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it.
Okay, so Clark, here's your invitation. We'd like to meet you for lunch someday.
Yes, I would like to meet him for lunch. On a day that I have time to do it, which is not very often.
Well, we'll get with you here.
Figure it out. I'll schedule it. Have his people come.
Can we take him for a pork chop?
Do you ever-
Never.
Do you ever get tired of lifting things up and putting them down?
It's not just about that. Sometimes I lift things up and put them down for other people. Sometimes I, I lift up auditions and put them down.
You know, hang on, you're not doing this right. You have to talk in the voice.
I'm not gonna do it. I'm-
Hell, we had to, we had to back up our Saturday fun day last week because Lobo had to run a quick audition.
Yes.
We got started late.
I didn't get that.
Did you find me a Golden Tee live yet? Because I really want one after playing at your house.
I was supposed to be the White Devil.
Oh, that's what you said, the White Devil.
In this audition.
Well, so tell us about that. What happened?
Well, I don't know what the show was, but I was the White Devil. I only had one line.
They don't give you much information?
Nah, I mean, you do, you don't. I mean, I, I, I snoop around a lot, but-
So you had to be in front of what? A green screen or something like that?
I was in front of my green screen at the house. I have all my taping stuff at the house. And my wife reads for me. She's probably a better actor than I am. I think the only ones I get are the ones she does. Um, but uh, I roughly reached my arm all the way to the elbow inside of someone and steal their soul. And then I turned around to go for the next person and she goes, what do you want? You just, you had a soul. And I go, all I want is more.
Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. I gotta get-
Do it again.
I gotta do it again.
Hang on, we gotta do this again. Hang on.
Let's use some of these effects of this board that we got.
Alright, go ahead.
All I want is more.
No, that didn't work. I gotta try that again.
How many times are we gonna do this? Sometimes it takes time.
I can't work under these conditions.
So John O'Poca's got his wallet sitting front and center.
Do it again.
With cash.
More.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, well, this is not working out, but I said more a lot of times, so.
Do it again.
So John, tell us about-
John, I am not a, I'm not a fucking dancing pony.
I just like hearing you doing it over and over again.
But anyway, so I didn't get the part apparently because it already filmed. And now I have no sound.
Yeah, whoa, here we're back, we're back.
And that happens. Like you do a thousand auditions to get one. And you know, it's a crapshoot. You're up against, you know, twenty, thirty thousand guys doing the same stuff. So when you actually land it, it's, it's, it's-
There we go. Okay, okay, so we gotta do it again.
He's gonna, he's not, he's not stopping until we do this.
I'm gonna figure this out, guys. And you know what the entertaining thing about this podcast is, is because it is completely organic.
We can do what we want.
Yeah, we can do whatever we want and we hope you enjoy it. Cause this is comedy, guys, right? So, go ahead.
All I want is more.
Yes.
No, I gotta do, okay, now you gotta, now I'm gonna-
Let's see who does it best. We're all gonna audition right now.
So now you're gonna go yes. Ready? So you go more, do it now.
More.
The magic of the soundboard. Yes.
Eventually.
I think I can probably co-star in the next one with you. Can I be your stunt man, your stunt double?
We could do twins.
I think you guys should do it too.
Wow. Gee Willikers Beaver.
You just felt so left out. I'm sorry, John.
I feel so empowered because I have to control the board. I can sit here and do whatever I want, whenever I want.
The maniacal laugh.
Oh my God, this is so much fun.
He's like the bad guy in a Bond movie. Oh no, you're the bad guy in Austin Powers.
No, he's Doctor Evil, Megamind over here. Oh, well, what we die. Oh, say.
One million dollars.
Back to reality, back to substance. Okay, I got an echo.
Okay, I'm done playing, guys.
So what do we got coming up?
John, keep your hands on the table.
What do we got coming up? Let's see, it's uh, July nineteenth here. Uh, kids start back to school pretty soon. We got school shopping coming up for my kids.
I saw something today where you have to sign up for a whole new thing with the school.
Literally.
Is that the school buck still?
No.
Literally, my wife has just spent two hours trying to get my son re-registered for school.
I got no replies. Skyward?
Skyward. So, so that's how you check your kids. I got two emails, cause I got two kids. So that is how you check your kids' progress. I mean, if you wanna follow their grades.
Why can't we not just go down to damn school, sign up, get a fuckin' school, got a problem, call teacher, call school, get a point with the teacher. I'm tired of all the technology.
Have you not heard what's going on? We have a new Delta variant of the, of the COVID going on.
So we're gonna not die from that too. That's cool.
Well, you know LA, Los Angeles and both, Los Angeles and in Nevada.
Nevada, I saw that.
Uh, well, Las Vegas.
Are they doing the masks again?
Mask mandates. So I mean, we've already proven that masks have no, no effect on it whatsoever. Okay, well, there's two camps on that. So they're, they're going with the Fauci camp. So they have now required masks again in Los Angeles and Nevada. I mean, come on, guys.
You know what I got a problem with? And, and this is just me. Of course, I've lived through a lot of crap. Man, this was, this is my time, it's my time. I mean, I don't hide from the tornado. I ride a motorcycle hundred thirty miles an hour down the highway. I race cars. I wreck shit for a living.
You, you're one of those that I believe my life is predetermined by God and-
My destiny is, well, I, I would hope by God, but nevertheless, I mean, if it's not your time, it's not your time. I mean, how many times have I been in, in world changing events and here I am?
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm not into it. Um, but the thing is, they haven't really proven to me that this is actually the thing. But what I look at this as, is it's, it's normalization, you know? Go back to Gen X. Our whole thing was fuck the system.
Mm-hmm.
Fuck the system. D S Nider, stand up in front of Congress saying, you can't tell me what to say. I got free speech.
Luther Campbell.
Yeah, and we did that. And now you literally have kids going, well, they said we have to wear the mask. I have to wear the mask cause they said we have to wear the mask.
What a total dish.
It's a conditioning, but like, wear your balls.
Yeah, where, what happened between Gen X and-
My life is not a team sport, okay?
It's I.
I, I love you.
I, I, I agree. I know where you're going and I agree.
I love my wife. I love everybody. My life is not a team sport. My life is my life. You can't tell me to control myself.
And what about your life? Say you get the Delta variant and you infect the whole city of Midlothian.
Well, that's just-
So when does your life become their life?
But if they're compromised, then they stay home.
Yeah.
Everybody else is gonna make it just fine. Look.
Did you hear about all these Democrats that went to Washington to block some whatever bill they were talking about and then they came back with COVID?
Well, you know, the best part is they were all on a plane with no mask.
Yeah, and they were saying, ha, ha, we're on the plane with no mask.
I fly quite, I fly quite often and I have to wear a mask.
Let me ask you this, Lobo, because I have not, I did not fly during COVID, okay? You have, I know, cause you just came back from Atlanta.
I did too. I did too. We picked up a puppy and-
Okay, you guys went to Miami. You've been to Atlanta at least, okay?
Atlanta and uh, Las Vegas.
Las Vegas, that's, that's true. You went to Vegas too during COVID. What's the lay of the land? When you were in Vegas, uh, and, and actually, I, I know your trip to Vegas, I was supposed to go and I didn't, but um,
Wait, you got an invite and I didn't?
What? Yeah. Uh, I don't know that Lobo invited me, but-
Consider yourself lucky.
Yeah, trust me, yeah, we, we didn't, yeah.
Consider yourself lucky. It wasn't like we-
We didn't, yeah, we didn't go, uh, it wasn't you.
I'd like to play that role. Hey, where was my invite?
I think you know that. But uh, so when, when you guys were in the casinos and in the restaurants, is Vegas?
If you were, at that time, if you were inside, you had to wear a mask.
Okay.
Unless you were smoking.
Which most people smoke chain smoke, so they don't wear masks.
Right. If you were smoking or you were drinking, you didn't have to wear a mask. So you're sitting at this machine and I go buy a cigar and you know, that's good three hours of not smoking, smoking. And I just sat there without the mask on. I had it on my ear, so it looked cool. I had like an earring, like the kinda old rocker days where you had one earring. And I was sitting there playing and I would puff the cigar just enough to keep it alive. And I would sit there for hours with no mask on while everybody else is sitting there with a mask. And I'm like, you're stupid. Just go over to Davidoff, buy yourself a cigar. Light it up and you're good for four hours. But you know, the thing is, and that, and that's kinda my thing with the masks and you know, everybody has a view. And I'm not here to tell anybody what to think about their view. And yeah, you're right. In, in the grand scheme of things and the, it's, it's everyone and I'm supposed to be a good person. To me, it's still my life. I don't care about your life. I care about my life. And if I choose to do this, I'm gonna do it. That's what the freedom part of this is. You know, we have this flag right here.
Yeah.
This flag stands for freedom. And that's the fan, that's, that right there gives me the right to do what I wanna do, not what you tell me to do.
Right.
And uh, you know, for me, the, the COVID, I, I still don't know anyone who's died of it. I'm sure people have.
I, I know a couple.
Well, of course, there's always a, a complication.
Well, we lost Carl Smith on the school board.
Well, but it's always a complication. There's something else wrong with the person.
Correct, correct.
Andy, we have our, we have our good buddy who's in the hospital right now.
But he's not COVID. He's just pneumonia.
Originally, they said it was COVID pneumonia. Now-
Now they're saying just pneumonia.
Okay. And I, and I don't know, I mean-
And I don't know either.
I cannot wait to have him on the show.
Jennifer, Jennifer, if you're listening, if you can educate us on what exactly he has, we'd appreciate it.
But even at that, he could have some other issue. See, my wife had COVID and she came through it and she had a really sick day, two days, week, whatever. Coughed for a while, this, that, the other. I slept with her in the same bed. We made out like twice last year.
Did you make out?
Last year?
Last year, twice.
Last year, you made out twice?
Well, no, one was this year. But nevertheless.
I like how you said we made out. I mean, come on, that's, that is so uh, Gen X.
Well, I mean, we didn't do like any tongue or anything, but you know, but uh, it was-
Aggressive cuddling?
I'm still here. I'm still here. I, I have felt no sickness, no illness, no whatever. Now, keep in mind, I've been in the gym for thirty-seven years, which is probably the dirtiest place you could ever be. which is probably the dirtiest place you could ever be. I'm probably even immune to tetanus by now. But, you know, to me, I just, I don't see the point. And now you go, well, this Delta variant is more contagious. Well, okay, well, what's the death rate again? Let's get back to the death rate. And of course, you know, everything is, is the ex-president's fault because he let everybody die. Well, sometimes people just die. That's part of life. I believe in Darwinism. I believe the strongest survive. And you know, if that's what kills me, is what kills me. But I'm not going to change my life. I'm not going to change my freedom. I'm not going to change the things that I do over fear.
Yeah, but all these people that had the COVID vaccination are getting Delta. I mean, what's up with that?
Well, I have not, has, has anybody here in this panel been vaccinated? Have you, Lobo? Have you, John? And I have not either.
Dude, I, I have told my clients.
It's not because I'm totally against it, but I have a higher, I'm having a hard time thinking, how in the hell did they come out with the vaccination so quickly? And, and it's not FDA approved by, by any means. And Johnson Johnson has more lawsuits now than they've ever had in the whole history of the company. How in the hell did they come up with something that this disease is so bad, come up with the vaccination so quickly? And then all of a sudden, everybody in the country or slash world has to have it.
Look, if it took the MX out.
Okay, this is, this is what it comes down to. Follow.
That might have been crack.
Follow the money.
My, my thing is, my thing is this is, for 37 years I've been in the gym, I've told every one of my clients that I've trained, all the pro athletes, the senators, the congressmen, everybody, I have a standard line. Oh man, what do you think about the supplement? Well, let's wait till it's around for 10 years. Let's see the side effects. And then we'll go from there. Look at those people on FinFinn. What happened to them?
They died.
Is that the same thing as the phentermine?
So now what you're telling.
Phentermine and phentermine.
Yeah. So now what you're telling me is, we came up with this in eight months. We can't cure a common cold or the flu, or AIDS or anything else, cancer. But we just magically came up with this drug in eight months that's going to save your life.
Exactly.
Okay, well, it may save my life, but what is the opposite? You know, if anal seepage is going to be a side effect of this, I don't need anal seepage. I'd rather die.
So let me ask.
You know, so let's think about this. Like what are the side effects? Are you going to die now of cancer or something worse or whatever from taking this? Now, I think there are people, if you know that you are compromised, you have diabetes, you have an asthma, let's say you're even an older person. I had my mom get it. I said, you don't want mom, you got nothing to lose. She turned 70 next month. She's already lived her life. My dad died two years ago. This may keep her alive.
But then again, you could kill her.
Well, but she's also fucking 70. I'm 48.
Let me tell you something. I still have a long time to live, hopefully. I have diabetes, type two diabetes. I don't want to take something.
Border.
I'm on the border. I don't want to put something in my body that could kill me right now.
Carry yourself either, which is even more amazing.
So why, okay, I want to take advantage.
I do care for myself.
You very rarely care for yourself ever.
Give me another shot, Doug.
You eat too many sweets.
Lobo's asked you to do certain things, but, and we're not going to bring your medical history on the podcast. But while we are talking about health, I do want to talk about something that's kind of common in today's, uh, in today's, uh, society for men.
erectile dysfunction?
No, not erectile dysfunction. We can do that another day. But you, with your background, how do you feel, uh, what do you think about testosterone replacement therapy? I take it.
We just hit a hot topic, bud.
Well, I, I take it. There's a lot of, I mean, even here in our city, there's a lot of people that take testosterone replacement therapy.
All right. You want to ask a question or hear the answer?
I want to hear the answer.
Let's hear the answer.
I believe wholeheartedly in hormone therapy. Hormone therapy started because women going through menopause had a hard time adjusting. And they found that if they could adjust the woman's hormones, it would be an easier time on her going through menopause. There was a doctor that came out in the mid 90s who was really big on it, especially HGH and different things like that, which is human growth hormone. And they call that the, uh, what do you call it? The something of life, the tree of life or whatever.
The fountain of youth.
Fountain of youth. There you go.
Yeah, that's what I call it.
Thank you. Um, that's dangerous to mess around.
Why? Because it gets, it lets you get it on again?
Yeah, that's dangerous to mess around with. That has to be really, really controlled. I mean, you look at Peyton Manning and now he looks like Herman Munster because his forehead grew so far and.
Well, that was HGH though.
That's what I was.
That's what he's talking about. Not, not testosterone.
But the thing is, is with testosterone, even women take testosterone shots as they get older. That's what they do to balance out their stuff. And you know, the thing is, is that if, I do not condone in any way, shape or form, any kind of illegal steroid or any kind of anything that is self-administered as far as you doing your dosage, you're doing this, you're doing that. There is science that goes to this that makes a lot of sense, but it should be done by a doctor. The doctor should prescribe, the doctor should administer. I don't even believe we're doing the shot at your, at your house.
I do, yeah.
Well, and the reason is, is because people get greedy. See, the thing is steroids aren't bad. Testosterone isn't bad. Uh, HGH isn't bad. The abuse of them.
Abuse, yeah, like anything.
Alcohol is not bad. We're drinking alcohol right now. That's not bad. But alcohol abuse is bad. The problem is, is most people aren't strong enough if they're left to their own devices to not double dose, triple dose, whatever.
And I've done that.
And the thing is, is it isn't even just about being a big jack dude. It's about, now you have thick blood, now you have high blood pressure, you have high cholesterol, you have liver dysfunction, you have all these other things that go along. Because again, you took something good and you made it bad. Like, look, you could eat cherries every day of your life.
Right.
But the more cherries you eat, you're going to get shits. So you've got to figure out what is the actual level that you can do. And that's what that doctor's for. There are guys that actually do this for a living.
Right.
And those guys know what they're doing. My guy in Burleson, I'm not going to plug him because.
I think I probably know him.
No, you don't. But he's not, I'm not going to plug him because he's not paying us. But this dude knows what's up.
Yeah.
Shane is a badass doctor.
I take, I.
You just said his name.
Well, my blood's drawn. How many Shanes do you think are in Burleson?
Well, Lobo, Lobo, let me ask you this. I get my blood drawn.
Doctor Shane.
I get my blood drawn every three months. Every three months, they draw my blood and they check my testosterone levels.
It should be about every six weeks. And you should actually be dumping blood.
Twice a year.
Every other month.
Oh, that quit that much, huh?
If you're on testosterone, because your blood will get thick.
It, no, yeah, blood dumps. I mean, that's what, I, I usually go twice a year to donate blood.
By the way, my wife gave this week, they had, uh, I didn't know what's happening.
Yeah, Raquel put that on Facebook.
And she told no one. She's, she's a blood ninja. And she didn't tell anybody about it.
Raquel, do you want to come tell everybody about the blood?
Actually, no. They actually did the, uh, the little trailer thing out, uh, next to the martial arts place in the industrial place. And she went and gave her blood and they need blood right now. So.
I think that's Randy Clayton's place.
But if you, if you, right now, they need blood. If you've got blood, you need to dump your blood, go dump your blood now. They need it. I don't know why. It must be some blood shortage or whatever. But, um, and they gave her cookies and candies and everything else. I get a, all right, see you later. But you know.
I used to, when I was in college down in Waco, I used to.
We don't need to hear those stories.
I used to give to the Red Cross a lot.
Oh.
And, uh, I never donated my plasma for money, but I always, every time I saw the Red Cross Blood Center, I always gave blood.
Yeah.
And I could tell, I, I had a card and after so many cards, you got like an award, but I, I've lost it since then. I can tell you what my blood type was and I can't anymore.
Yeah, I can't.
But I'm a firm believer of giving blood. Back when nine 11 happened, I stood in the line for four hours to give blood. I've gotten off that and I probably need to get back into it. But I'm a firm believer, give blood because you know, you're saving somebody's life.
Yeah, like right now, we don't, I, I, I don't know, Lobo, you don't know the exact reason why this initiative is happening, but.
No, they just told her they need blood.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're, they're in need of blood. So go give blood Midlothian.
By the way, they're still talking.
I see that. And I still want to know where Tammy Toby is.
Tammy, she might not feel well.
I just want to know what coloring book Edward had because it was.
We're going to eBay off the coloring book. So Edward, please give us your coloring book afterwards.
Eduardo, let me want the coloring page.
Eddie colored his ass off.
He's out here, or he was taking some intensive notes because everyone else had their head up watching the audience and he did not.
Dead serious, I'm going to tell you, he's taking notes. I know him.
We know him, yes.
He's taking notes. But the coloring book kind of made sense.
It's just, it's funnier.
Dude, we are lucky. We are lucky to have that guy.
We really are. And I would love to, I, I would love to sit and, we should probably reach out to him and just sit and, and hear his thoughts on this. Because I regard him as one of probably the strongest school board members that we have.
Eduardo, Eduardo, if you're listening, we'd really love to talk to you.
Eduardo, you're my boy.
Dude, I love the dude. And, uh, I had joked with him, but I literally have, have heard three or four different conversations with him. Had him and heard other ones. And this dude is a solid dude.
And Eduardo, we will have an alcohol-free podcast just for you because we respect you that much.
No.
Yeah, we will. We will. Yes.
I might put a salt cut.
Well, I'll tell you one thing right now. Eduardo's been out to Brandon Burger with this. No, he doesn't consume alcohol.
Does not.
But he, he, he does not judge people that do. He's a straight up dude.
Tell you, what I, the vibe I get from him dead serious is Edwards James almost and stand and deliver. Like I believe that when that man was in the classroom.
The principal.
He had, well, no, he was in the classroom first.
He was, yeah. He was.
I think he commanded those kids' attention and I think they learned from him because, you know, you got to remember, we talked last week about your coaches and your teachers and stuff that you remember. You didn't mention one of your teachers today.
Mr. Arnold. Mr. Arnold was my favorite social studies teacher of all times. He's a black man, but I love him to death. He was just a great, great, great man and I respect him.
And Mr. Chavez was my, believe it or not, civics teacher, which is before they had government. We learned actual civics, which is what government is supposed to be about. And he used to always joke with us about watching cartoons all day and watching Chaka. You remember Land of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Watching Chaka all day.
Yeah, yeah.
And he was so funny and so, uh, captivating to watch as a character, as a teacher, which is, I think that, that's a job like I have. Whenever the teacher, you have to play a character. And I think we, I do it here in this, you do, we're all characters. We play a character every day of our life. And this man is the only teacher that I can guarantee you, I remember almost everything he said, which out of all the subjects, civics? Like damn, where was my math? Like I could have been a billionaire, you know? But he literally had us, you know, just on the edge of our seat waiting.
Yeah.
And, and I see that in Eduardo and I really respect Eduardo a lot and.
He's got that it factor. He does. As an educator.
He's just a normal man trying to do a good job.
He came from behind. I mean, he was, he came in halfway through the, uh, through the election period. But you know, what he said captivated everybody that voted for him. And he, you know, he had to just listen to it for a couple of minutes. You know, this is a manner of integrity.
You know what he did? He stood up.